David, Father, we come to you today thanking you for the moisture, but we know that our patrons are needing some drier moisture so they can get their crops in the field. And that comes with busy times and maybe not paying as much attention as they should. So please be with our patrons and our farmers and everybody in this busy harvest time of year. Please be with these young men as they make decisions for our county. And please be with our county patrons that are being affected with loss of loved ones or sickness or cancer. Just please be with all of them. We ask all these things in their son's name, Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the light and the United States of America to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Motion for the Mets.
All fair and...
Aye.
...and the Albers. Do you need to go get some?
Yes, it will.
Thought I should come. Did you have any questions on my resale stuff? Forgot that's on the agenda. It happens when you're gone for three days. You have no idea what's happening.
You kidding? I don't know what happened in day to day. I'm here.
I think I gave it to you. Oh, I didn't know. I gave it to you. You can't... No. That was a dinner item that didn't happen?
I did... Oh, no.
What's the next thing?
They let you out of Mexico?
Probably they did.
No stress at all.
Barney's no stress.
Little shark cat.
You can go to EBS, you can...
Nice with his mom.
I can give him a new children's surf chest, right?
He'll stand there at the door sometimes. And talk back and forth. He knows all those things. Why don't you just go?
I tried to even go outside too when you were there.
I don't get it.
He'll come out of the dad and then one of these stations. I miss when you wouldn't go anywhere. It will happen.
And there are all the extra deals that we've put on need to be canceled by 3 o'clock on the 30th. So I can move my reports to Buddy Carroll in the air.
Don't bring him much for that. I didn't really give me half of it. I didn't.
Pretty much going.
Nobody got sick until we got off the ship.
That's only one of them. There's two of them.
I didn't put... We didn't... You know, I went to the doctor. Took all the kids to get the patch.
I didn't know.
And Dana actually told me, she says, you know, when they get sick, it's on the... She said, it's not at all.
It wasn't?
So I didn't put a patch on.
I signed another one. I just didn't look at it.
It wasn't there.
Corporation puked all the way home from Dallas. I couldn't find the patches. I kept trying to find them patches. But just trying to rummage through everything, you know, I just kept overlooking them. Then we get home and then I felt gross. Timothy felt gross. Brayden felt gross.
Just the whole feeling, you think?
Yeah.
They followed us after lunch. We're going into line.
Well, I noticed I was standing there in the house and I... And I thought, hey, can I do it? I was out there on death one night. I thought it was peahens and I thought, it's too hot to be peahens. Because I kept seeing white bellies, you know, and they was diving into water as the flying pitch.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Seen some baby dolphins, some very big sea turtles.
Where'd you go?
Cosmelo.
Cosmelo?
Yeah.
And you got a haunt burst to the Rotan Island?
Nope. We just poured the pills to it.
That's what we're doing since 30.
I did not like that. I wish we would've stayed a couple of days. So doing some research, I guess there is a couple cruises where they'll afford for two days.
Yeah, they're more expensive than that.
That way you've got more time to...
Fly there to stay. That's what I like about it.
Down.
They're probably cheaper too.
Something.
Oh, and the London. Look at that. It's a great long touristy place, yeah.
I wanted to do that excursion to go see the... Oh, the Mayans.
I got real harsh. It's not going to be out for long.
We could find... There wasn't a place on the ship to sign up for those experiments.
Well, that's true too.
They want you to get on the internet.
They pay for the internet?
They do pay. I'm not doing that. My dad said that was the worst cruise that he's ever done. Says it's never stopping, Dad.
Because of the internet shock?
Uh, just because of the service period. Yeah. This is the first time he'd ever went on a partner cruise. And he's never booked a cruise on here.
We've done that once.
The Grease. We had fun ducking. You know, little baby Jesuses. Which Grayson loves Eddie. It was fun. I didn't know they did that. Or I put a lot of bunch of ducks and take them with us so that he could...
I had more trouble too, you know. One sibling would find a duck that I put out and the other sibling wouldn't, then I'd feel guilty. So I tried to find... Tried to like chase the other sibling and try to guess where they were going to go so I could lay him down in front of him and...
You know what I couldn't get is I can't see anything. But I would find the little tiny ducks and wouldn't find the big ones.
I found four little bitty tiny ones. One was on a necklace.
That's about all the ones I found was the little tiny ones. I thought, why am I finding them? And he said, I can't find the bigger ones. This is stupid. I can't see.
Uh, motion to approve the amount of warrants for payment.
It was good times. Wasn't long enough.
This was like five nights?
Yep.
We have like this from EMS, this is two, this is three sheriff and...
I bet we just...
Seven, sure.
But if we get seen for like gals, did you know?
Three o'clock on the 30th?
Way more than that. It was more in ponderous. I was trying... I was looking for something. I might try. Any groups where I can start paying one now. That's what boys want to do. They want the lessons.
Is it Falcone? It's Falcone.
Yeah. Yeah.
I want to steal something.
It's nice. We went five weeks ago.
Too many got District 3 covered here.
I think so. Can't even know.
That's it, right? There are you.
Hey, can you bring me a couple envelope openers over here?
That covers all the vendors.
That's what I'm getting. I thought he was going to blast it though. So that's why.
I should have approved it.
I told him last time. It's a free blanket. I'm very married.
All fair and...
Aye.
They'll be laughing when they need something. Oops, sorry Charlie.
Bar for them. Road crossing permits.
Like that's...
Open ward, open...
Excursion we're going on. Might be fun.
If I can, or I...
It might be a... It might be a wild white cat, right?
Yeah.
How high is the heat advisory? Is it like 70 or is it like 100?
I don't know what the temperature on tape is sending me. It shows the... All of the heat advisory in the... Some pictures they show.
Uh, Placey's supposed to be bringing a couple over. Sorry.
Sunbow. It is not arrived.
Got a couple openers. Um, Paul, we have a glass and a...
Right side as well.
Timothy said we go back. We can take their surf rods.
Yours is a single Gibson. On the back, United League ship.
There's nobody on the back of the ship. We have control.
That's what I can guarantee.
It'd be like trolling. Get some big surf rods and some big hooks.
I love rock.
So what do you think they'd say? We pull them big gifts, red snappers? You know, the only thing that I was disappointed was that was there was no... Really.
Storm cat.
I intended on eating rat lakes and stuff. I don't know how to do it now, but I think on the ocean.
Arcosa.
Cause I'll never have fun.
Not arrived.
I'm on that one.
Where's the insurance going back to?
Cosmelo. I always thought it was Cosmelo. What did you do there?
Cummings. The room.
I heard the beach was full of coral. And the tax that got $20 a person to take out.
Advance air.
How many memberships were they there?
Three. Yeah, there's three of them. I didn't... I didn't see it.
I never see one from each of your hour conflicts. I was just curious which ones most... I'm sorry.
Advance works.
Some checks in will be there. So then there's...
Yeah, so we can just walk around and hit all the...
Advance for others.
Did you see the pool was right there before? Supposed to be a pool right there.
Give me... Give me some...
Not 20.
That might be the one for mine. Divisible from the things that I had learned. I never saw one of them was empty.
That guy was wrong. This is all pieces of people who metal shit. And they were pissed. And it did cause them to caution. So then when I was...
Row yard, like closer to going into town, there was guys been like numerous.
And cats and... But by that time they were... And make a pact. And then they're... Yeah. I didn't... I can't... I can't imagine being on there being that way. I was in a casino. Today. That poor lady sitting next to me.
I need a motion on those. You want to accept them?
Motion made.
Who else? You know what else?
You first.
Those are the three things that you spend money in your shops on the ship. And you go like... They double their points on egg.
Oh darn.
Mine has a sign, I guess.
Okay, amen. We can assist them.
Motion to approve the first agreement.
I'll second. All fair and...
Aye.
FY 2526, Alpha Kennedy's release.
Mike, some of those you've signed sometime. I'm not sure why you signed them ahead. You signed it above, on the low, and you signed down below.
Is that the...
This is my chicken scratches.
Um, I think we need to look at a couple things on this before we approve this. For one, where would kind of... Is that kind of what we're sending to Buddy Carroll with that?
This is what he had his totals on also.
Okay. Now, on the shares, we're at 38364, 36433. Gary, where are you at on that? I don't think that'll run the shares.
I don't think so either. I didn't see... I didn't hear what you said. We was...
It's that.
338, 36433. That's taking your personal services from 40,006,9980 to 241,38828. And that's taking your MNO from 184,70166 to... Let me see mine. I can't read this writing. Mine, I thought my writing was bad, sorry. Taking your MNO to 66,97605.
For last year, he was at, I believe this is last year's estimate, the 2425? He was at 405. So that's a pretty significant cut on...
And we're still robbing here to pay Paul.
Yes.
Well, a lot of last year's, there was six employees that was taken out of cash accounts. As of coming in, he won't have any to take out of cash accounts. They'll have sales tax and regular cash accounts that can build back up, but that is going to be very slow. But I don't know where he's going to come up with the other 200 and whatever that is.
These are cash accounts.
I'm at 495, 477 if you add...
We're getting to have the other 219,003,1166 of your personal services.
If you add the highlighted part.
Highlighted part. Last I talked to Brian Mitchell on paying things out of the emergency reserve fund. That is not in a rainy day fund. That is an actual sales tax account. And he was, as of Thursday, is the last time I talked to him. He was still researching whether we could do that or not. I have... Yeah, Thursday was the last time I heard from him.
Then on the officer's accounts. There's... These are the cash sales accounts. This is county clerk, our court clerks. Here's the county clerks. And then the treasures. I got the treasures here. What I was thinking, what I think we ought to look at then is the treasurer and the assessor and the court clerk pay a half a salary for a full salary or one person for a half a year salary. And then I think the county clerk can cover a whole year.
Oh, no, I can't. I've done it for six years and I'm down to...
113,000 in there.
I can have her run my cash account.
You can pull it tomorrow. It's 113,000 for a week.
Why can't Highway pay for six months of my purchasing agent? You have plenty of money in District 4. And Tammy, you speak up for your cash accounts.
I did talk to Mike about it this morning. I, for my, to use my court fund, it has to be budgeted through the state. I already sent my budget in. And remoting has to be approved by the district judge. And I don't know if I'll be able to go back and get more money. I don't know if it'll work or not.
I thought Jennifer said that you can't pay, she can't pay any salaries out of hers. I mean, she's not here to say that. That's what she said at our meeting.
Well, she could actually sit, put as a rate, over the BI for half a year.
That's not a cash account.
She could pay it out of her BI account.
Yeah, she can. But that's not a cash account. You were talking about cash accounts. So you can move half a year to BI, which she has plenty of in there because she has a full 3,060 times 12 in her BI, personal services. Her BI personally has not had that much in there. She doesn't make that much.
Salaries, Tammy, have there?
She's got two. She's got two. The treasurer's got two. Assessor's got two.
But Jennifer also increased her MNO by 50,000 in the BI. So she's not really giving anything up.
One of mine is state money. It's budgeted state money. I get this much for this. Like the $900 I give you all a month for the toilet paper and the water, that's out of that state money. If I take that and then use it towards an employee, I could probably, that would help. But it's still, you're still coming out the same.
So you're talking about using the whole 12 months of the 900 rental?
I mean, I have to, I have to have this off because I can't just pick and choose where these... Why not just go, this is through the state. This is state money.
I'm saying that's 10,800. That's only $1,800 every six months. That won't cover an employee.
Did you say Buddy shot this number pretty low?
Buddy shot all estimated revenue very low. And we again won't know any of that until after fiscal year ends.
Right.
Which these have to be signed and signed by the exercise board before the end of the fiscal year. So...
But he did tell me if we keep using that bigger money that not came in, it just takes out the next year's.
Yes, you are very correct.
But I know for sure the treasurer can run a half a year, the assessor can run a half a year, and I know you can run a half a year or so.
Highway can pay a half a year of my purchasing agent also. And I envision her job is Highway. There's a lot of counties and I can put an email out and let you know how many counties pay for half of their purchasing agents. I had paid for an employee out of my cash accounts for over four years. And before that, I paid a half a year. I think you all will be able to ready to help too.
Here's the cash accounts if you want to see them.
I get those few guys that are Monday. And we have officer meetings, so we have them. Like they're trying to hide them. But again, the assessor's office has a huge raise in there. Tammy's has a huge raise in theirs. Kelsey and I are paying the raises out of our cash accounts already. So I suggest that if you're going to make us pay out of our cash accounts for a salary, then make us pay to the cash accounts for the raises. I have an employee that's been here 27 years and she's going to be making less than the person that's been here two years. I suggest we throw in the numbers like Buddy was here... I suggest we throw in the numbers like Buddy was here and we agreed on. And then when we get all of our June thirtieth reports to him and he has time to look at ours, then we can hand it in November. Just get off my back, that hurts the treasurer's office and the assessor's office when they're turned in. So like, that's why we start on these so early, is to help them out. This is an estimate of these.
But it's inaccurate, it's nothing to play, because sheriff's two hundred thousand dollars short, so.
Totally agree. Don't know why it was ever brought up, that we could use the emergency reserves upon them.
I still think if they got cash accounts, they may have that, because we're six hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand short there.
More than that, the seven, the seventy-one thousand for, I don't know. Acquiesce?
So we're eight hundred thousand short.
No, probably, probably six, probably seven, twenty-five, seven thirty. Because that seventy-one thousand should not a hundred percent come out of County General.
Well, in the past, sheriff's office has been paying for four out of our cash accounts.
You've been paying for more than that.
Pardon me?
You've been paying for more than that.
Yeah. Well, on, on Rick's notes, that's, that's what it's showing.
Have you guys looked at, um, checking sales tax amount? About fifty-two percent. You know, there's lots of other places that we can come up and help. Sheriff is already on there. I mean, the nine-one-one is, they, I mean, fifty, she took hers from the, um...
It's because she's paying salaries over her sales taxes.
Yeah, two hundred and eight thousand, well, not just her cash sales tax, she has other cash accounts also. To seven, or to fifty-one thousand, so.
Sonny turned in, did Buddy says?
Do what?
Sonny's turned in, did Buddy says?
I know, we don't know a hundred percent where we're at.
Not true.
We'd say it all back, but we're still don't know where we're at.
The difference in the assessor's is only nine thousand nine hundred, that's not a half a year. And just, I mean, she's not here to, to voice her opinion, and I know she cannot use, you know, she could probably move some of more of her, more of her MNO into her cash accounts, um, for some technology stuff, but I don't know how you're going to get a half a year of her cash accounts when it's specified that she can't use it. Her VI is a County General account, but the only difference there is nine thousand nine hundred. That's almost too much. We're almost too much. It's too light, it's too bright, it's not that I can't read it, but I think it's just too light and it's not on. We're having to send some, any of County Generals as the obvious representatives of the chair. This is another one, um, you know, last year we paid forty thousand out of, um, County General's sales tax. Can you feel that? I don't know.
You saw both copies of this, or what?
No, just the top one. Which is it? What is it?
Clerk.
No, I just, I just attached my other one to show you what I, what I kept down. This auditor amount will change since we just made those payments.
Just sign there's on the officer, wherever it's at.
That one. That one. That one. That's the officer. Okay, sorry, I missed, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I strongly recommend that the three, three offices on District, on the second floor, please pay half a salary. And I think that you are considered trying to bunch a debt next year, paying half salary. The money's there to pay us. Do what?
We still do that, we can go back to money.
Yeah. Because then we're going to have to do something with Sheriff, because he's, he's not going to make it.
Make a motion. Approve this one. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Decoration surplus courthouse, County. Servant.
Motion to approve declaration.
Resolution disposing equipment, County servant. Now, I guess the new one's all up for the courthouse servant.
As far as I know, he is.
Motion to approve resolution.
All in favor? Free cell minutes for twenty-five.
We only had four properties this year, and they all were sold, so none of them were gated back to the county.
Good. Make a motion to approve the cell minutes.
Free cell financial statement.
Make a motion to approve that statement.
Resolution for Agco, SIC, and SIG.
And the percentage?
And the percentage? Sixty, forty?
I don't remember what it was. Remember sixty-five, thirty-five, or sixty, forty?
Sixty, forty.
On both, Echo SIG and SIG.
Echo SIG, yeah.
So Highway is going to pay sixty?
Sixty. I don't like it, but...
This is the one that went through the meeting last time, and you guys decided not to, we're not allowed to table it, so.
That's something that probably are to really tally, all these things to see where we really stand on.
Motion to approve.
I did it a couple of years ago, that's pretty close.
That's what I was going to say. Can I get all the billings and everything else on there?
Resolution to ex...
I need a second.
I'm sorry.
Resolution to excuse the three hundred and thirty...
Nope, you got Echo SIG, it's the, um, the... Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, 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 sorry. Sorry.
Worked my conversation.
This has the option on there where you can pay it all at once on July thirty-first, or you can split it into two installations. The total is a hundred and eighteen thousand, six fifteen. If you make it in two payments, the total is one twenty-three, ninety-four, so that's a difference of holding it off of... One twenty-three, ninety-four, and that comes to fifteen. One thousand seven seventy-nine, so, I don't know what.
It seemed like last year we paid it all at once.
One of them we paid, because we ran out of ARPA money, and one of them we split. And one of them we paid it all at once, so it was a smaller of the two, so then the Echo SIG, we paid it all at once, the Echo SIG, we paid in two payments.
Is there any money to pay?
There's no ARPA, no, ARPA is zero, we done tallied that out, we done sent those reports to the state, not changing that. No money, no money on LAT CF, no money on ARPA. I mean, it helped County General a little bit, we could kind of, um, bring that property insurance on Echo SIG down a little bit on County General's side. Um, but I mean, in all actual, you're going to pay it sometime, because there's not going to be any more money put in there, so save almost eighteen hundred dollars, but pay it all at once.
Go ahead and do it.
So option one. That would not, drop that down to twenty-eight thousand of the seventy-one thousand, then, um, we kind of canceled in seventy-one thousand because we didn't know what the percentage was going to be. So that will help with that twenty thousand that I don't know where it was coming from. From Kelsey, because Kelsey's so nice.
Make a motion for the Echo SIG, uh, work on.
I'll say it. Unclaimed property of State Oklahoma Treasure.
This is just something that they send in every year, we used to do it all the time. Um, there's just a website on there, I'll fit it in the minutes, and we can post it out there. Uh, it's just basically to help our patrons to see if they have any, um, unclaimed property out there. Like I said, we used to always do it, hadn't done it in a while, um, because they hadn't been sending it out, so I figure like if we, um, if they go to the trouble of letting us know the website out there, we can loan our patrons some.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that one. I'm sorry, who made what?
I made motion to approve.
Make a second. Contract between Eastern Oklahoma Youth Services and Alphatah County.
This is a normal contract, I have, there's two here, um, oh. We don't have, did they have, um, this one, so. There's last page on both of them, on all detention service contracts.
Make a motion to approve the contract.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contract service to County Budgeting Service and County Commissioners. I'm not sure.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Yeah, we can just get close, hurry, unforeseen, hurry, hurry!
Letter of resignation, Emergency Manager. Mr. Lancaster.
Yeah. I write this letter to request and inform my resignation. That's the Baron Lancaster, Alphatah County Emergency Manager. He's writing this letter to inform Alphatah County Board of Commissioners that he will be resigning from this position, the effective date will be June thirtieth. Lancaster would like to take this moment and say thank you for the opportunity, for allowing to work for Alphatah County these last two years. The experience has been great, a lot learned, and just a lot of good people that I got to work alongside.
Thank you for your service.
Yes. Thank you. Lots of compliments.
Yes, 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 it's been great. I tried to make a nice phone call and he, he said, "No, I don't want to talk to you."
Make a motion to accept this as a letter. Unfortunately.
All in favor? unforeseen business.
Do it.
Chair.